Good evening, everybody. Call to order the September 24th Common Council meeting. See, everyone is checked in. District 7 is vacant. If you can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, public comments. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council. On recognition by the mayor, persons may address the council from the podium, first stating their name and address. The council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Seeing no one, we'll go on to item D. We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2019 meeting. Motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. Butke. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That motion carries nine to zero. I didn't mean any staff updates.
Yeah, we have two this evening. The first one from Bryce Hembrook, our city planner.
Thank you, Steve. So I just wanted to remind everyone that the International Walk to School Day is Wednesday, October 2nd. So each year, children in the Marshfield School District, as well as some of the parochial schools, participate in the Walk and Bike to School Day. And typically, each school plans a special event for that day. We also have our one-month Walk and Bike to School Challenge that starts on October, or October 1st and continues until the end of October. Participating students are eligible to win bike helmets, t-shirts, and two grand prize winners at each school will receive a new bike. This is thanks to the donations from Marshfield Clinic Health System, Nathanville Dairy, and other private donors. And so I just kind of wanted to let you guys know that, and then if anyone has questions, they can contact me at City Hall. And then also, if any Common Council members would like to help volunteer, you can reach out to me, and I can point you in the right direction to help out at the schools. So just wanted to remind everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Bryce. Any other staff updates?
Yeah, just one. And this kind of harkens back to last year with respect to the budget process. Staff is working hard right now on the 2020 budget proposal to bring to council. The meeting schedule that you've been given, calls for meetings on Monday, the 14th, Monday, the 21st, and Tuesday, the 29th of October. As with last year, we may be looking for a little bit of leeway in case this schedule gets moved back. We'd like to bookmark with you, with your permission, a meeting on Monday, November 4th, should we have trouble delivering the budget to you by October 11th. I think maybe many of you know this, but state aid numbers and some of those kinds of things don't come in until around the 1st of October, making it kind of a crunch. So our desire right now is still to have that first meeting be on Monday, October 14th. But in case for some reason that is not possible, we'd like to know if you would be willing to make the third and final meeting on Monday, November 4th, after Board of Public Works, if that becomes necessary. I'm seeing heads nod, so that works. Thank you. That's all the staff updates.
All right, item F, Mayor's comments. Employee recognition, 10 years, starting October 5th, 2009, for Josh Miller, our Development Services Director. So Josh, thank you for everything that you do. Just very quickly, I don't know if you've been up and down Central today or not, but those big cones, those big orange things are gone, and it looks really good. So that's a nice, it's a nice addition. Item G, council comments. Any comments from the council? No? All right, item H, reports from commissions, boards, or committees? Seeing none, we'll go to the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to receive and place and file approving all recommended actions in the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Bargender, second by Mr. Patshel. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries nine to zero. Item K, request to confirm council direction to execute an offer to purchase for the property at 110 South Chestnut Street, presented by Steve Barge, City Administrator.
Thank you. After a discussion and closed session on September 10th, the last council meeting, council returned to open session and did pass a motion, CC 19-212, seeking to have the council, or having staff execute an offer to purchase for the property at 110 South Chestnut Avenue. As part of state law requirements, this had to go to the Plan Commission, that's under 62, sub, I'm sorry, 62.23 sub 5 of Wisconsin statutes. And it's intended for the Plan Commission to review such acquisition and possible use of a property by the city and to give its recommendation or report on how they view that. That did happen at the September 7th meeting. The commission members definitely expressed concerns with the request. And a motion in support of city acquisition of the site for possible future uses was defeated. So as part of the agenda packet, you do have the minutes for the Plan Commission meeting in your packet, and that further explains some of their rationale. Staff did point out to the council, and I believe that Josh Miller did as part of his presentation to the Plan Commission, what we believe benefits are of possible acquisition now and in the future. They tie to the Second Street Corridor, possibly going to the west of Chestnut Avenue, and also to temporary current and possible future Police Department uses for their needs. So I'm not going to go into what some of the comments were made before. I think you've heard this in the past. I'll take any questions, and so would Josh, I'm sure, as well. But staff would recommend council approval of a motion to confirm its September motion, September 10th motion, and direct staff to execute an offer to purchase for the property at 110 South Chestnut Avenue.
Thank you. So there is a motion and a second to direct staff to execute a purchase offer. Let's see, discussion, Mr. Whittson.
Thank you. Am I correct in that it was defeated unanimously by that commission?
You are correct.
So I have grave concerns, I guess, as to why we would move forward, then, was something that this organ, or this, this body, having looked at this, had unanimously decided against. So I guess I'm not really certain that it's a good choice if we have a Plan Commission saying no, and we're thinking yes.
I would like to address that being on the Planning Commission. I could tell you that the Planning Commission was not aware how long the EDB has been working on this project. They were not made aware of the three or four months that it has been here to counsel. And the bigger picture, the idea, I mean, basically, the Planning Commission received a five-minute presentation. It was a good presentation, but it's very hard, it's very difficult to put a year's worth of work into a five-minute presentation. And so there were things there that I don't believe that everyone was fully aware of. Although I certainly respect the decision, we do have to look at the fact that we have had, know that the EDB has been working on this project for about a year, going on for some time. We, as the council, received all the information gruellingly, hours upon hours of us here, going through, going through the concerns, pro and, pro and con. And so I just don't know if we can, you know, in a five-minute presentation, although I certainly respect the members of the Planning Commission, I just don't think they had enough information, enough back and forth, to make a good, informed decision. Mr. Butke?
Yeah, I want to echo what the mayor said. I am a member of the EDB committee, and we have had long discussions on this for a year or better. And I too think that we were given a lot more information than what they could have in a short period of time. So I'm going to support this. I think it's, you know, we, Mr., what's your name over there? Mr. Whittson, sorry. Maybe I was trying to forget your, what's your comment. I think that was, I think there was a plan there. We talked about the Police Department, that it will be temporarily stored for the Police Department, so there's that part of it as well. And I guess I can't say any more than what the mayor did, but I fully agree, and I hope we support it and move forward.
Mr. McSwain?
Yeah, there's recently a news article that pointed out that Marshfield was rated as one of the safest cities in the area. Certainly, the responsibility for that doesn't just lie with Police Department, it also lies on those of us who are to provide for them. The needs of policing anyway have changed since the first police station was made, but we need to do something with the police station. We spent $15,000 that I personally was against spending to find a different location and found that there wasn't any. This came out as the best location for an expansion. However, when the results were presented to us, it was pointed out that probably cost wasn't given as heavy a weight as it might have been in the decision-making. And in cost, this is millions of dollars cheaper to expand here. The acquisition of this property would make sense in the long term if we had no use for it in the short term. But in the short term, we can use it to put a Band-Aid on a situation where our squad cars are out in the open. They represent much more today than, you know, back when the first police station was made. We need to have them under. This is, this is something that makes sense in the short term and a long term. The fact that there's flexibility in what it can be used for in the future is not a weakness to me, it's a strength. I think if the, if the public would like to see the full arguments for this, Josh Miller's made a very fine presentation. It's in the inner packet. It's accessible to every, every citizen from the, from the city's website. This is part of a plan to first solve, or at least ameliorate a little bit, a problem the police are having now. But in the future, it is to replace parking that would be taken with an expansion of the Police Department, an expansion that's needed, expansion that we're responsible for providing. And this is millions of dollars cheaper doing it on this site than in any other one.
Thank you. Mr. Whittson?
Thank you. Again, to go back to the Plan Commission and the discussion that they had, I don't believe, at least, at least according to the comments that I had heard, one of the individuals of that Plan Commission being here, present in the audience, I don't believe that the Second Street Corridor concept is anything new that they just found out about and had five-minute discussion of. I believe, especially in the comments made by that individual, that there's been talk of Ball Diamond to Library Second Street Corridor, and the fact that there's a, what the council has discussed as being a key piece of real estate within that corridor, being discussed for purchase, and yet the Planning Commission has concerns because there doesn't seem to be a definitive understanding of what that corridor is going to look like. And if I'm correct, I think that the concept of the corridor has changed several times with nothing definitive coming out of any discussion recently. You know, a colleague of mine that used to sit in this vacant seat here has made the comment that we have committees and commissions that are in place to make decisions, and it's up to us to make sure that we have quality people in those positions, and then as a council to trust the work that takes place in those committees and commissions. And here we are now being told, well, not in this case. In this case, we have a commission that hasn't known about a corridor which has been talked about for years, hasn't gotten enough information in the five-minute presentation, is against it, but we should, we should disregard that commission's recommendations and vote for it anyway. So again, I'm not really certain why we would want to forego a recommendation from a commission in this case, but in most other cases, accept that. And that's, again, where I'm coming from.
Thank you. And, you know, I just want to address that, being on the Planning Commission. I, I hear what you're saying completely. And because we do give this to committees and commissions. And one thing I think we have to understand about this is this has been discussed for about a year with the EDB extensively on, as Mr. McSwain comes up, we've got the Second Street Corridor. Right now, the immediate use is parking, could be for the Police Department. There's options. But the other thing, and to your point is, one of the commissions that we had was given a five-minute presentation. Now, they're all very good on there, and they take this seriously and they read the information. But the EDB has also had this, as well as this council, has also listened to hours of input on this. And this council made a recommendation to proceed based on the hours of information that we've had, both, and we've heard everything both ways. So I appreciate your concern about when we get, you know, we've got, if this were just one committee that we gave this to, and then they said no, that'd be one thing. But when you've got the EDB, all of you, and, you know, and our Development Services Director that are giving this, you know, is anything perfect? No, but this is, this is good all the way around. The other thing is, the council is the one that initially sent this, after the council agreed to it. So in essence, a no vote would be saying that you were wrong the first time. You didn't look into it enough. And I don't think that's the case, because I know how thorough you all are with our extensive meetings. Mr. Hemmer?
Follow up with one more comment. I was on the fence, I think, at the time, after all of our extensive discussion, and I think that made that pretty clear. In our extensive discussions that we've had, I was on the fence. I leaned toward it because I thought it was okay for the Police Department. I'm now teetering the other way, not because I think that we were wrong in a decision we made, but I was on the fence, maybe leaning toward one direction. Planning Commission, I think, is pushing me the other way because of the way they're weighing in on this.
Thank you. Mr. Hemmer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Pardon me. A week ago, I had my tirade on the Plan Commission. And I did a bit of research. I talked to a number of people that have been familiar with the corridor and with the police situation. And, you know, I put all these pros and cons on a whiteboard, and I started to systematically go down. And one of the things that, that concerned me, and it still does, is the condition of the facility that we're thinking of buying. I understand it was a Level 1 done, correct, Josh? Yes. But I would opt, how long ago was that done, by the way? Of this year? One of the things that I thought of at the time, I said, okay, since the asbestos and the other contamination is there, I would like to know how much is really there. And one of the ways we could do it is by having a Level 2. Now, then it comes to cost that's involved with a Level 2, which is true. But I would either like the person that owns the property now to pay for that or take it off the purchase price if he's willing to. But I think the idea as a whole is a good idea of buying it. So if anybody's out there that can help me out with that, I would really appreciate it, and would make me feel a lot more comfortable, even though the citizens, the citizens are comfortable with it too. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Mr. Butke?
Yeah, Mr. Whittson talked about the, they, he hasn't seen anything, the conceptual plan of Second Street, you know? And I don't want to, I don't want to get into one item of it, but I'd like for Josh to come up. We do have a plan on to, when I say we, the EDB, just authorized a group to do a conceptual plan of that. Could you talk about that, Josh, please?
Well, the EDB did approach the UW Capstone project at the University of
Well, the EDB did approach the UW Capstone project at the University of Wisconsin-Madison to do a project. They didn't, they didn't accept the project this year, but I have been in communication with the professor there and we're looking to do other opportunities in the future. So, you know, we did look at this as a, the Second Street Corridor quite a bit, you know, about spring of 2018. We did an RFP, we got a proposal for it, it was pretty expensive. And we decided because of the city garage and the police station needs would come before any opportunity to move the city garage, we decided that we would have to scale back the Second Street Corridor. I think there's still, there's, there's planning documents that talk about the Second Street Corridor, there's planning documents that talk about this property. And, and I think this property is a key catalyst to, to redeveloping the Second Street Corridor. But yeah, right now, we, we don't have a specific concept for that plan. We need to develop that, but it's just, it's been a long time coming because as you go, things take priority. We've had a lot of things that have gone on in the last 18 months and 24 months. So there is a, a plan to look at this Second Street Corridor more and come up with a concept plan. We just, we, we could scale it back and look at more of a, you know, nicer, like a, like a more of a plan or, or like a map, sort of like, trying to think of the right term, but more of a picture of what it would look like versus like a, a detailed plan, like a, yeah, like a concept plan. We could do that and we could do that probably relatively cheaply, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't factor in environmental, that wouldn't factor in property acquisition and brownfield development or things like that. So, yeah, we, so that project may get delayed a little bit more and obviously budgets are finite, so we have a limited budget.
Good day. Josh, do you want to talk about the, Mr. Henler talked about the contamination? Want to just talk about that a little bit between Mr. Baltis and you, what you found out? I believe some of that is closed down from the DNR.
Well, what, what the property owner did back in 1990 when the tanks were removed is they identified some contamination as part of a Phase 1 when they removed the tanks. And as part of the remediation process, they did the Phase 2. So they had the test drill, the test wells, and they were monitoring things and the remediation plan was natural attenuation, which means you let it go and it kind of eventually just kind of, I want to say heals itself, but, and I think there were, there are other cleaning measures and stuff as part of that if I'm not mistaken. But over by 2001, the DNR determined that that site would be closed. And that means that the, the testing that they have in the soil and the groundwater contamination that did exist before was to, back to levels that were acceptable. That's not to say that there's no other releases or anything like that, but based on the tanks that were in there that we know that were in there back in 1990, that, that release has been addressed through, to the acceptable level of the DNR.
And just one more thing. Just recently, I know Dan talked about the areas in the city that were contaminated, considered contaminated throughout the city. There's many, many of them over the years and there's no issues with that. I, I believe the Hotel Conference Center was a one area, I believe. Maybe Dan, do you, do you want to talk about that, please?
What I had mentioned is that a similar property would might be the Hotel Conference Center where the city acquired that property back in the late 90s, there were some contamination issues with it. In that case, they were not closed sites, we had to deal with the cleanup and the tank removals and so forth, and then of course offered that property for redevelopment. Also, when Veterans Parkway was constructed back in the late 1990s, early 2000s, there were several contaminated sites along that corridor and they were cleaned up as part of the projects. But the point when I mentioned this two weeks ago was that we've dealt with these types of sites before in the past and they're, they're not something that you have to be afraid of. You go in with your eyes open, you're aware of what you're dealing with. In this case, we're maybe better off than some of these other sites because it has been closed already. As Josh mentioned, it doesn't mean that there is no contamination on the site, but from the testing that has been done, the levels are of sufficient nature that no further action is required at this point. Some point in time when the, when the property is redeveloped, if the building comes down and we build a parking lot, for instance, if that was the direction, any contamination we encounter would have to be dealt with. But DNR has said that a parking lot on a site like this is a good use, a good reuse of a site because essentially that parking lot creates a cap over whatever contamination is left behind. You deal with what you find, but the rest can stay in place. So from the staff perspective, we felt while there is some risk, it's a pretty low-level risk to acquire the property and redevelopment has, redevelop it as a parking lot. But that's, that's the context of my comments on the other, other sites, Ron.
Thank you, Mr. McSwain.
Just to briefly say that I appreciate the concerns about the Second Street Corridor, but you're losing sight of the real need for this property. We need to expand the police station, we need to have those law enforcement vehicles under protection. In order to do so, the cheapest, the best way by millions of dollars is to expand into an existing parking lot that the city owns next to the police station. In order to replace those parking spaces, we can have for future use, this area as a parking space. In the meantime, until we come up with the funds, this can also serve as a Band-Aid approach to protecting those vehicles until then. The Second Street Corridor thing, we, we've got flexibility here, let's not get caught up in it. This is about millions of dollars and it's about the police station.
Thank you, Mrs. Burrows.
Actually, I was going to say exactly what Mr. McSwain just said was, you know, I'm not looking, you know, I mean, I, I appreciate the Plan Commission, you know, and I appreciate the time this council and, and the city and all the employees have put into this, and it's been a lot. And I, and I realize that it was a very short presentation to the Plan Commission, this council has sit here and, and we have talked about this subject for a lot, hours, as the mayor had pointed out. So with all due respect, I, I want to look back at what this council had originally decided, you know, and what our vote was a few weeks ago. And in echoing Mr. McSwain, we are looking at this for an immediate need and that is to house our, our police vehicles that are not currently being housed, winter is just around the corner, and that is an immediate need and it is indeed saving millions, millions, millions of dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Jockic.
I, I appreciate the concerns that have been raised regarding the, the use of that. I guess I also have a concern is why wasn't the Plan Commission given enough information? And if they weren't, why wasn't this then tabled for a future meeting so that they have the information within, with which to make a decision? That's a part that bothers me here. I mean, I, I agree with, with Alderman Whitzel that, you know, I don't want to just go against a unanimous decision from the Plan Commission, and I appreciate the information and the time we have spent, but most of our time has been spent concerning the price, you know, we, and utilization, but all that information should have been given to the Plan Commission. And, and so I guess I'm disappointed that we are going to have to approve this and go against the commission that voted unanimously because they didn't have information. That's a part that...
Thank you, Mr. Whitzel.
He was going to respond.
I'll, I'll, I can address your point after others, but I want to make sure I get back to your point. If you want to go. Okay, okay, thank you. I mean, the, the concern's been raised about, you know, why would we not support the commission and, and, you know, those kind of things. I have great respect for the, the commission, I, I've obviously gone to a lot of those meetings over time and I know those folks do a good job and put a lot of time in. And, and I think by and large, our intent is not to go against our committees, boards and commissions that, that do our, our work for us. In this case, if you look at 62.23 sub 5 of state law, while it looks pretty open-ended if you just take the words at their face, I believe from what I've been able to glean that the intent was for, in situations like this where the municipality is acquiring a property for public use, maybe a different use than is going on at the time, that the, the commission should conduct at least a cursory review and make sure that it doesn't comply with the comprehensive plan, does it comply with any strategic plans or the downtown master plan, does it comply with zoning code? That's their, that's their function in this. And, and I, I get the impression that their discussion may have gone beyond that as to what's the highest investor or the most, most appropriate use of the site. And I, I, I respect their judgment, I really do, but I, I think the intent, if we're going to be the other way around, we should have sent this to the commission before we ever talked about it at council level. But it's a, and it's an expansion potentially of a public facility, we wanted to have them do a review to make sure that, that there were no plans that were being violated by what we were suggesting. And I didn't see an indication that there were. So I, as much as I respect them and their discussion, I think that nothing came out of that that would take away from, in my mind anyway, what the council's intent was originally.
Thank you, Mr. Whitzel.
Thank you. Again, I'm sort of on the fence, I have an incredible amount of respect for those that are serving on that particular commission. There are some individuals I know that, that put in a tremendous amount of work and attend a lot of meetings outside of the commission, well-informed with what's going on and are part of that commission and made part of that decision. I guess, again, on the fence, if this was something I would be in favor of, it would really have to do with, I guess, the way it fits into the police department situation. And perhaps the, the chief can weigh in. Chief here? Maybe the chief can weigh in on something. One of the things that comes to mind is that there would be the potential immediate use of this to house vehicles that are currently in the elements. And so it's not an ideal situation where those vehicles sit out winter, summer, whatever, having this garage space to house those vehicles immediately and then maybe long-term additional parking while construction is underway and then, you know, so on and so, so forth from there. One of the things that comes to mind is that we're going to have officers who arrive at a station in plain clothes, and I believe, maybe I'm wrong on this, but I believe it's so that there's some level of anonymity as they're traveling across town, that they're not advertising that they're an officer while not on duty. They arrive, they change clothes in the station, they then get into a vehicle that's parked immediately outside the station, not a lot of danger in that situation getting into a vehicle and now they're patrolling. This is now having them walk a block's distance or better than a half a block's distance to now get to those vehicles. Is there any concern that in full uniform attire, that there's going to be any safety concerns as they get those vehicles that far away?
Yeah, thank you. I, I see the use of this vehicle, or use of this building being such that, right now we have five garage stalls that are attached to the building, six if you include our Sally Port where we drop off prisoners and such. Two of those five garage stalls is, one is, maintains detective vehicles, so if a detective is called in at any hour of the night, it's fully equipped, it's out of the elements, they can just respond because they don't have take-home vehicles. The other of the five stalls is, one of the other five stalls is our ordinance van, which again has certain items in it that can't freeze, medications, euthanasia, things. Getting those two vehicles out of there and over to this other property, along with our other vehicles, along which we have, each detective has their own vehicle, those are normally kept out in the elements. We have a second ordinance vehicle because at times we have two ordinance officers working, that is kept out in the elements and it's not equipped with what the one inside is. What this does is it allows us to take these detective vehicles, these second-line vehicles, these ordinance vehicles, put them over there for storage, and it truly opens up all five garage bays for our first-line squad to keep them out of the elements. We still may, I mean, if we need to keep a vehicle running for whatever reasons, we may still keep that on that west side lot and, and out in the open. Our canines, we would probably, you know, at times keep them out and keep the vehicle running like they do. But for the use I see of it, it would open up spots on that, what's called the central lot or that lot that's to the south of the police department. Right now, I mean, our, our, our vehicles that we have parked there, I mean, we probably have, I would say on an average day, at least eight supplementary or secondary vehicles that are parked over there, two inside that are taking up space, and at least one or two in, in the lot, in that west lot. We have a transport vehicle, which is, it's kind of a, we call it our extra patrol vehicle, but what it is, is if we ever have to, we have, we keep our higher miles vehicle fully equipped in case we have a vehicle that's in the shop. But we also have transport officers and they would take this vehicle and transport somebody in custody down to Wisconsin Rapids or up to Wausau and back. This vehicle is always left out in the elements and oftentimes we have to thaw it out, we have to jumpstart it if it isn't used within three, four, or five days. This is a vehicle that we can keep over at this property and again, out of the elements in a semi-heated area to where it would be quick to start, would be not frozen and such. So in, in essence, it's opening up more spots in that central lot, which, don't quote me on this, but I think it's one of our busiest or, or most populated lots in the downtown area. It's oftentimes, I mean, we had recently removed the, or the timed parking that was on First Street in front of the police department. We removed the signs for that timed parking just so that police staff could park there if need be and free up some of those lots in that central lot. Well, now if we can remove some of these secondary vehicles from that lot as well, it's freeing up even more places for our citizens and visitors.
But is there any concern with those officers being fully booked, leaving the station, walking a half a block, getting to those vehicles, safety-wise?
Well, it wouldn't be, I don't, I don't foresee it being our first-line squads that respond to emergencies being parked over there, it would be these detective vehicles and, and such, and the ordinance vehicles. I see the, the frontline squads still remaining on police department property or on the, on the property that they currently are.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McSwain.
Yeah, just to point out that the, the various committees and, and commissions and such that we have give us invaluable input, and in this case, the Planning Commission gave us their input, we have respected it, they have no way of knowing all the things that we discussed in, in closed session. We, we have considered many, many of these things. And again, I, I point out to the, to the public as well, that you can see in our, in our packet, Josh Miller responded to them, I thought, very well in his, in his presentation. So we have listened to them, but the fact of the matter is, we have the responsibilities elected officials to solve problems.
Thank you, Mr. Henler.
Thank you. Since my question about contamination was so enthusiastically accepted by the council, I guess I'm disappointed in that. However, I think that, as Dan mentioned, I think we, we are going to buy more properties throughout the city in the future years, and there's always a certain element of contamination. And as usual, the city will pick those up. So having that in mind, I don't think I could have a, a snowball chance in hell of trying to get this amended and renegotiate. I think we're maybe beyond the point of negotiation. In that case, I would call the question, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, could you raise your hand?
Yeah, Mike had his thing on, but that kind of motion takes precedence.
Right, and you have...
This is a motion then to call a question. So there's a motion by Mr. Henler to call a question, second by Mr. Butke, seeing no discussion, please vote. And that motion carries nine to zero. So then, there was a motion and a second to direct staff to execute an offer to purchase. Do we have to put that motion back up? There we go. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. Thank you, that motion carries eight to one. Item L, second reading of ordinance number 1418, amending section 12-63, 4-5 to remove the requirement, the Board of Public Works sets schedules for a collection of curbside yard waste and Christmas trees presented by Dan Connect, Public Works Director.
Thank you, I hope this one's a little easier. Right now, though, we have a schedule that gets set each fall for a collection of yard waste, brush and branches and Christmas trees for the following year. Our municipal code requires that the Board of Public Works establish that schedule. In reality, it's established by staff and we handle the, the publication of that schedule. It has been recommended by the Board of Public Works that we remove that requirement from the code, that the board establishes the schedule, and then that would just be a staff, staff-led effort. This ordinance would make that change to the code and recommended for approval this evening.
Thank you, there is a, a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1418. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you.
Item M, first reading of ordinance number 1419, annexation and setting community mixed UCMU zoning district for nine... CMU zoning district for 9.49 acres located west of North Central Avenue and east of North Beach Avenue, presented by Bryce Hembro, City Planner.
Thank you, Mayor. So the applicant is looking to annex three parcels and road right-of-ways. This annex would include 9.49 acres into the city. City sanitary sewer and water services are already located near the property, they would just need to be connected. All three parcels, one of which is an outlet, are recommended to be zoned CMU, which is community mixed-use. The SAF report highlights that the annexation will meet the appropriate utilities criteria and other important community goals that the city uses to determine if the annexation is in our best interest. The Wisconsin Department of Administration has reviewed this proposal and have decided that this is in the public interest. These subject properties were located in the no contest area in the joint boundary plan with the Town of McMillan, and we talked with the Town of McMillan, they had no concerns with annexation. This is the first reading, and thus, no further action is being requested at this meeting. The final reading will be on October 8.
Thank you. Any questions for Bryce? Seeing none. Thank you, Bryce. We'll go on to item N, request to approve resolution number 2019-38, specific implementation plan amendment, request by Amy Cole to amend a previously approved specific implementation plan for the Prairie Run subdivision to create a new land use type called accessory apartment to be permitted as a conditional use in the commercial district of the Prairie Run planned development, presented by Bryce Hembro.
Thank you, Mayor. So the applicant is requesting to create a land use type and define it to be allowed to build a accessory apartment as a conditional use in the commercial district in the Prairie Run planned development. So just to be clear, this would only apply to the Prairie Run commercial district rather than the entire zoning code or other zoning districts, I should say, sorry. The applicant is ultimately interested in adding on to their garage and basically building an apartment. This would be located on the same property as a commercial development. Plan developments are intended to encourage, promote, and provide improved environmental design by allowing for greater freedom, imagination, and flexibility in the development of land while ensuring substantial compliance with the basic intent of this chapter and the comprehensive plan as well. The applicant is proposing to define accessory apartment as a, quote, "a separate and complete dwelling unit that is contained on the same lot as a structure of a single-family dwelling or business." In the SAF report, we listed a number of staff concerns. Due to the concerns that were listed in the SAF report, staff recommended to deny the request. However, SAF also recognized that the argument, that there was an argument to be made for why this request should be approved. The Plan Commission ultimately recommended to approve the request by the applicant last week at the meeting, and thus, the recommendation is to approve resolution number 2019-38.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 2019-38? Motion by Mr. Buttke, second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Mr. Henler.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? Mr. McSwain.
Yeah, and I did read that commission and found those, that input to be helpful in deciding to be in favor of this.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, then, please vote. That motion carries nine to zero. Item O, request for approval to execute option year for the shared ride service presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you very much. You may recall that the city has had an ongoing relationship with Running Incorporated of ROPA to operate Marshfield Public Transit. We get federal and state grant money that covers a lot of the cost of that service. It's a shared ride service, and it's been great for our customers, our citizens. Under the grant, we normally have a five-year agreement with the provider, and a lot of us think of that as being five years before we have to talk about it again. But what it really is, it shows a commitment, five years with a provider, but there's still an initial one-year term and four one-year renewals after that. That gives the municipality a chance to determine if there's problems or concerns with, you know, complaints, are people being served well, is the service being run effectively, and those kind of things. Everything we've heard in the last 12 months would suggest that Running is doing a good job. There's obviously complaints now and then, somebody says that the wait time was a little longer than they'd like, but by and large, those have been few and far between, so we feel good about our relationship with Running. So what we're asking you to do is consider approving another one-year agreement with them for the calendar year 2020, and the only change to the agreement we have today would be to give them a CPI inflationary adjustment of 1.7%, which reflects the CPI over the past 12 months. So with that, staff's recommendation would be that the city exercises the second of the four available option years to continue with calendar year 2020 with Running Incorporated as our shared ride taxi provider.
Thank you. Is there a motion to authorize staff to execute that agreement with Running Inc. for calendar year 2020? A motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. McSwain. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Item P, request to elect one person to the Marshfield Utility Commission to serve a five-year term running from October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2024. Letter of interest was received from Harry Borgman at 1207 East 21st Avenue, and he was the only, he was the only one in, he would be returning. So with that, we would entertain a motion to elect Harry Borgman to the Marshfield Utility Commission. Motion by Mr. Buttke, second by Mr. Henler. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries nine to zero. Item Q, appointment of Tanya Kunderger, 514 Holly Avenue, to the Committee on Aging to complete a vacant term ending April 30, 2020. Is there a motion to approve her appointment? Motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. Whittle. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Thank you. And item R, request council direction on filing, filling the vacancy for the unexpired term of older person Zaleski, District 7, appointment versus leave vacant until the April 2020 election, presented by Steve Barks.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Jason Zaleski, District 7, Council Representative, did resign formally last Thursday, and that leaves an opening in that district. He would have been up for reelection in April of 2020, so just seven months from now, and that does leave the council a decision because being that it's less than a year remaining, the council could choose to fill the vacancy by appointment or could choose to allow that position to remain vacant. I think you can make an argument either way. In one sense, you don't want to have constituents in a part of the community not represented. On the other hand, you could certainly say that with the process of appointment and then a learning curve time period, it might be hard for the person to get up to speed with a lot of their time left. But that's, this is totally council's call and council's decision. So there is a process outlined under section 2-06 of the code that gives you outlining directions as to how you would refill the position if you want to, and it's up to you whether you want to, as I said before, leave it vacant for the remainder of Mr. Zaleski's term or move ahead and direct staff to begin the appointment procedure, the posting and getting applicants as prescribed.
Thank you. Mr. Buttke, you have a motion. Can you turn your, can you turn your mic on?
Hard to train a new dog. I think we should, we owe to the district, the seventh district, to appoint somebody to get represented. We have, we have budget coming up, I think they need a say in it, not to say that the rest of us couldn't, but I think somebody from that district as an older person would be the right way to go. So my motion is to do that.
Motion, and then there is a...
Maybe, I don't know, timeframe, two weeks or something, is that appropriate? Give the people two weeks or a week, whatever you think is appropriate to submit?
Yeah, again, the process, if you choose to fill this vacancy, is prescribed pretty clearly in section 2-06 of city code. It refers to the city clerk advertising for two weeks locally and taking candidates, and it kind of walks through what happens from there.
Okay, that's my motion then.
And there's a second by Mr. Henler, Mrs....
Yeah, man.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing no further discussion, please vote. And that motion carries nine to zero. Item S, adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin statutes, Chapter 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, possible litigation involving delinquent sanitary sewer charges, possible litigation involving development agreement in tid number seven, and closed session under Wisconsin statutes, Chapter 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, possible new three-year labor agreement with the city fire union. Is there, there is a motion and a second to go into closed session. Seeing no discussion, please vote. Thank you. We are in closed session. Let's hold off and...